Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission on October 23rd, 2017, to order. Madam Secretary, could you give us a roll call?
Commissioner Alderetti.
Here.
Commissioner Becerra.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras-Lio.
Here.
Chairman McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza. Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Verino.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Eric, would you lead us with the pledge of allegiance?
Everyone please stand and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the procedure of justice for all.
At this time, we'll take public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? You may fill out a request to speak from the secretary, and after introduction, you have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. I have one card here for public speaking, and that's James Kendrick.
Good evening, fellow commissioners, staff. It's been a while since I've been here. I'm here on a general comment tonight. I will also be speaking on item four, but in my general comment, I think it's time for the Planning Commission and staff to revisit the parking quotas in our city. I am a Lyft driver part-time now to make a little extra cash, but I'm going to tell you right now, all this construction that's going on, I'm before housing, but the parking is already starting to show impacts on the streets. These apartments today that are being built, they say they're affordable housing. They're on major corridors, but a lot of them, it's already starting to show increased traffic. And because of the rates today, average rate for a two-bed or two-bath, $2,400 and up, you're still going to have overcrowding. Guess what? It's 1983 all over again. I don't think our parking standards in our apartment dwellings, our new townhome dwellings, are meeting the needs for the number of people that are being put into the, going to be moving into these houses. It's taking now double incomes, triple incomes, even to afford the new housing. And it's something we need to really, I think, staff needs to address, and our city needs to address, because look at Townsend and Rayton, our older neighborhoods, the overcrowding. They're parking on the corners. You cannot make turns. They're parking, they're parking all the way up to the corner. They're blocking driveways. So it's something I think that the Planning Commission should ask staff to do, is we need to update, look back at how we're getting people. We want them to come here and live here, but our codes and all, to me, are outdated. Start driving our streets and see how crowded they're getting, especially the parking at night. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Hearing no more public comments, we'll close public comments at this time. Going to the consent calendar, the first term of business on the consent calendar, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on these items? Do you have, do we have a motion to approve items A through B on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval. With the, I think it's excused absences for Commissioner Nguyen and Mendoza.
Correct.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five to zero. We'll now move on to the regular business calendar. Please be advised that the action of the Planning Commission is the final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the city municipal code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the planning department within 10 days from the date of the commission's actions, or unless set forward a public hearing by the city council. An appeal from a decision or requirement of the Planning Commission may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. At this time, we'd like to consider item one, Site Plan Review Number 2017-07, to allow the demolition and reconstruction of a two-car garage in historic French Park located at 506 East Washington Avenue. Do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose at this time? Hearing none, staff, please make your presentation. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have a Power One presentation. I'll just be giving a brief verbal presentation. So as was mentioned, the proposal tonight is to review the demolition of a two-car garage and replace it with a two-car garage. The reason it's coming before you is that it's in SD 19, which is the French Park Historic District. When things are repaired or refurbished, like to like, it does not come before you, but when there's new construction, it's, in the code, it's required to come to Planning Commission. So the proposed project has been reviewed by French Park. As is attached in the staff report, they've provided some comments that have been addressed in the proposal that you have before you. And the two-car garage, basically, 483 square feet, would be in the same location as the prior two-car garage. It would be designed to have two front doors to make it a little more functional and usable. It's set back from the street, and architecturally, it will be designed with exterior materials to complement the main historic house. Be happy to entertain any questions at this point. Staff's recommending approval of a site plan review before you.
Does the commission have any questions of Melanie and staff? Yes, we're good. All right. Would the applicant at this point in time like to comment on this item? Is that a no?
Okay.
Are you good? Okay. Go ahead.
Has this been done before? Has something similar to this been reconstructed already and brought to the commission in the past?
Has a garage been demoed and replaced before? I don't think I've brought one before that I can recall. We've had renovations of garages and different things, but...
Not demolition and rebuild.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
But just for clarification, I think the garage that was demoed was a historic property, correct?
The property itself, I guess you'd consider historic property, it's the front house that's considered historically significant. The garage that was built later, the front house was built in the 18, circa 1800s. The house, the two-car garage was built in 1930s, so it was not original course to the 1800 house, so it's not considered historically significant in that way.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any written correspondence on this? We do not have any, let's open it for public comments at this point in time. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments. Would anybody like to make a motion relative to this item?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving site plan review number 2017-07 as conditioned.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five to zero. Check Commissioner Nguyen and Commissioner Mendoza are absent. This is the time and place for public hearing number, item number two, Site Plan Review Number 2017-06, variance number 2017-03, and tentative parcel map number 2016-04, to allow the construction of a two-story, 51,024 square feet building at 1701 East St. Andrews Place. Do any of the commissioners at this time have anything they wish to disclose?
Mr. Chair, I'll be recusing myself from this item as I'm a member of the Santa Ana Elks Lodge.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sir, staff, would you like to make your presentation at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. The item before you was a new building for the Santa Ana Elks Lodge, as well as Orange County's credit union. So very briefly, site plan review, which as of this week will no longer be required as one of your amendments you passed about a month and a half ago, took the site plan reviews out of the planning commission's purview and left it back with staff, but it's still on here because it's, the deadline has not passed yet. Then we have a variance for parking, as well as a parcel map to subdivide a property into two parcels. And again, it's all for the construction of a 51,000-square-foot, two-story office building. Here's your site again on St. Andrews. This is the, about 2.6 acre site located within SD 69. It's a master planned area that was rezoned about 20 years ago. Here's an aerial view of the, or a photograph of the property there. As you can see, it's vacant right now, which the building's proposed. Here's a site plan. You can see the building in the center and surrounded by parking, landscape setbacks, all in compliance with the SD provisions as well as the zoning code. Here's a floor plan of the building, proposed to be used by the Elks on the ground floor. You can see their lounge area, little dining area, bar lounge, then the back of house areas to the side, some office space there on the left, bottom left-hand corner. And then on the second floor, they've got their meeting space, as well as the Orange County Credit Union offices as well. It's about a 60/40 split, about 30,000 square feet for the Elks, another 20,000, under 20,000 for the credit union. Here's a rendering of what the project will look like here. Here's another rendering of the property. So they have three actions before you tonight. The first one is site plan review, which basically says that this project is in compliance with the SD 69, which is the unique zoning for this property there. You can see the chart there in front of you, as well as what's in the staff board, this project is in compliance with all the provisions of the SD 69 and the zoning code, and therefore we are recommending approval of the site plan review, the SPR. Second request is a variance. They're requesting a parking variance for the project site. They need about 150 spaces, they have 375. So in a scenario such as this, we require a parking study, which is performed by a parking consultant, and the study basically found that during the peak hours, there's still ample parking on this site, as well as on the existing credit union site, which I'll show you here in a second here. Let's see. There you go. Here's the properties right now. To the right is the proposed project. To the left is where the Orange County Credit Union is currently operating. Those two properties right there, 377 parking spaces. The parking study said that during the peak time, the worst-case scenario, there's still ample parking for the two projects out there. As you know, the last meeting, this project was scheduled for review. We had some questions raised by the adjacent property owner. We met with them last week, and we have addressed their concerns through the various conditions of approval that are attached to the resolution there. There's about seven conditions of approval that basically requires the parking be provided onsite, that's some onsite maintenance, somebody there to direct people towards the site, and if any parking situation comes up, the project can come back before you for taking other consideration at it. So that's the parking variance. Again, we recommend approval of it based upon the study that was done for the site that shows there is ample parking. And then the final one, the rendering here, the view you have here, is the parcel map. As you can see, the property's approximately five acres, looking to be subdivided into two separate parcels. That subdivision doesn't meet all the requirements for the city subdivision ordinance, as well as complies with the state subdivision map act, and therefore recommend approval for that one as well. And based upon the analysis, staff is recommending approval of the following three actions, the site plan review, the variance, and the map as conditioned. That's it for the presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Does the commission have any questions of staff? Hearing none. Would the applicant at this point in time like to comment on this item?
No, we have no comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, have we received any written communication on this item? We will now open the discussion for public comment. Would anybody want to make a public comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll close public comments. Do I have a motion on item number two? And do I have a second?
That we adopt a resolution approving site plan review number 2017-06 as conditioned, adopt a resolution approving variance number 2017-03 as conditioned, and adopt a resolution approving tentative parcel map number 2016-04 as conditioned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Four to zero with Commissioner Becerra, the senior, and Commissioners Nguyen and Mendoza have been absent. This is the time and place for a public hearing, item number three, conditional use permit number 2017-20, to allow the sale of alcohol beverages for on-premise consumption at Tapas Del Chino, located at 2431 North Tustin Avenue, Unit D. Do any of the commissioners have anything that they would like to disclose with regards to this item? Hearing none, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, planning commissioners. Before you, we have conditional use permit 2017-20, to allow the sale of beer and wine for on-premise consumption at a new eating establishment located at 2431 North Tustin As previously mentioned, this is an application for a new alcohol license type 41, to allow the sale of beer and wine for on-premise consumption. The project, or sorry, the tenant is, or the applicant is currently in plan check to submit for a new interior tenant improvement to allow the new construction of a new eating establishment, approximately 1,900 square, 1,960 square feet, to accommodate for 49 This is a site photo. The property is in the plan residential estate zoning district. It is surrounded by commercial, a mixture of commercial and residential land uses. This is an aerial photo. As you can see, there is sufficient surface parking to accommodate for a new restaurant in this commercial center. And this is the site plan, again, of the site, and the red star is the proposed location of the eating establishment. And this is the floor plan as proposed. Again, it is approximately 1,960 square feet. The only alcohol storage area is going to be underneath and a cooler at the front of the restaurant, and it will only occupy 1% of the gross floor area of the eating establishment. This is the current site photo. As you can see, it's currently vacant, and the tenant would be occupying Unit D. Project analysis, the site currently meets all the Santa Ana Municipal Code regulations. The use is allowed per the variance number 19, per the variance of 1975-61. The restaurant will provide a service to the community and its residents, as well as the visitors, and allowing the alcohol license will encourage new opportunities for business growth and provide a service, a new service to the commercial center. Again, this would be the first eating establishment that would provide the beer and wine onsite. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2017-20. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here in the audience, if you guys have any questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions of staff?
Oh, Scarlett. Do you know, was there something in there prior?
Yes, it was just a retail store.
It was retail?
Mm-hmm.
And how long has it been, do you know how long it's been in?
The new eating establishment, or the previous?
The previous, prior to this, the restaurant coming in?
How long? They were in that suite. I believe they were there for more than about approximately 20 years. They were, they were there for a long time.
The retail?
Yeah, that's correct.
And how long has the retail been closed?
No more than a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I noticed there's a letter here from a neighbor opposed to it. Was there a neighborhood meeting, and what was the response, the overwhelming response to this?
We did reach out to the neighbors. A 500-foot radius was done from the property, and a letter was sent out to them explaining to them the action and the new alcohol license for the business.
And what was, this was the only response you received?
That is correct. We did reach out also to the closest neighborhood association, and they were in, they had no questions or concerns. They were actually in favor of granting the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant at this point in time like to comment on this item?
Mr. Chair, actually, I have one question for the applicant. So I was just curious, is this your first restaurant?
This is a mom-and-pop shop. My parents have owned a business for over 30 years. That's in Outlake County. This will be our first shop with the beer license, hoping we can have the opportunity. It's going to be a family restaurant, and, you know, giving us the opportunity to hopefully expand.
So you know a thing or two about restaurants, then?
Say that again.
I said you know a thing or two about restaurants, then?
Correct.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have we received any written notice at this time, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, the correspondence that the commission received is part of the pack.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open it up for public comment. Would anybody like to comment on this item at this time? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to the commission. Do I have a motion on item number three?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2017-20.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Five to zero. This is the time and place for a public hearing on item number four, zoning ordinance amendment number 2017-04, to amend various sections of Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code to adopt a local ordinance regulating the establishment of accessory dwelling units. Do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose at this time regarding this item?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Becerra.
I've had numerous communications, but I believe that we've all received those emails that were in our packet. I've also had conversations with Michael Tardif and Lisandro Orozco.
Okay. Anybody else? I too have had conversations with a number of people on this subject. That's it. Staff, are you ready to make the presentation?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Up for discussion before you is zoning ordinance amendment 2017-4, to amend various sections of Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. The proposed amendment to Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code would replace the city's second dwelling unit ordinance established in 2003 with a new accessory dwelling unit ordinance. The ordinance will incorporate new provisions of the state ADU law and introduce provisions to regulate the size and location of ADUs in Santa Ana, while taking into account the unique characteristics of the city. Just to give a little bit of background, in 2003, the state legislature enacted AB 1866, which took effect in 2003. Then it was called the granny flat ordinance. A lot of people still refer to the accessory dwellings as granny flats or accessory dwellings. There's different terminology for it, but it's all in reference to an accessory living unit that's accessory to a primary single-family residence. After 2003, the city's response to AB 1866 was to adopt a local ordinance, NS 2629, amending Santa Ana Municipal Code regarding second dwelling units, allowing them in single-family residential districts. After that, believing that local jurisdictions were being too restrictive on the construction of ADUs, the state legislature enacted AB 2299 and Senate Bill 1069 to further reduce what they thought were prohibitive local regulations regarding ADU construction. The state law took effect January 1st of this year, which made the city's previously existing second dwelling unit ordinance null and void. Since January 1st of this year, the city has been legally required to accept ADU applications and apply state mandated standards until such a point that the city adopt a local ordinance. The state law doesn't require the city to adopt a local ordinance. However, if we do not, then we'd have to continue to implement the state standards, which are a little bit looser and don't really take into consideration our local characteristics and the unique things that make Santa Ana, Santa Ana. So just to go a little into that, if we do decide to adopt a local ordinance, we would not be able to prohibit ADUs in the city, and the standards that we develop would have to be, would have to meet the standard there. They cannot be arbitrary, excessive, or burdensome so as to unreasonably restrict the ability of a homeowner to create an accessory dwelling unit in the zones which they're authorized by the local ordinance. In addition to that, the state also has some exceptions that the local ordinance would have to abide by, and that has to do with the conversion of existing spaces and parking exceptions. And I'll get a little bit into that later in the presentation. So conversion of existing spaces, what the state law says is, if you have an existing structure on your site, such as a workshop, or a garage, or a pool room, that you would like to convert to an accessory dwelling unit, the city cannot require that you meet the current setback standards. So that's one of the exceptions that's included in state law, that we would not be able to apply or change. The other would be the parking requirements. There's exceptions for properties that are located within one-half mile of public transit that are in a historic district, within one block of a car share program or vehicle located on a street that has a permit parking program, where permits are not offered to the residents of the accessory dwelling unit, or if you're converting an existing space into an accessory dwelling unit, the city would not be able to require any additional parking spaces for the accessory dwellings in those cases. So based on that, what we are proposing is an ordinance that we prepared that introduces new tailored ADU regulations that recognize the diversity of Santa Ana neighborhoods and addresses the concerns related to open space, parking, size, and scale that the community has voiced to us at the various committee meetings that we've had. I'm going to highlight some of the major issues that are topics of concern in the neighborhood and that the proposed local ordinance would address. The previously existing ordinance identified areas of the city that are considered park-deficient, and these are areas that are more than a quarter-mile from a pocket park, or more than a half-mile from a neighborhood park. And a pocket park is considered a park that's less than... And a pocket park is considered a park that's less than five acres in size, and a neighborhood park would be a park that's larger than five acres in size. So these properties that are located within those areas that you can see on the map there highlighted in pink, were not allowed to construct an accessory dwelling unit. So what the proposed ordinance would do is continue to apply those criteria to the city and keep the park-deficient area standard in place. And since the adoption of the last ordinance in 2003, there have been numerous park spaces constructed. However, the city is still well below the goal that's set forth in the general plan, land use element, that is two acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. So to not further strain the parkland in the adjacent areas to those park-deficient areas, we are proposing that the park-deficient standard criteria be continued to apply in the proposed ordinance. And for those properties that may have a unique circumstance where they'd be able to mitigate for the open space deficiency by providing, say, more than what is traditionally provided in single-family residents onsite, they'd have an opportunity to apply for a minor exception. A minor exception is similar to a variance process where there'd be a public hearing, the neighborhood would be informed, and they'd have their opportunity to speak at the hearing if they're in favor or against the project. So the other major topic and area of concern in the community has been parking, especially from committee members that live in neighborhoods with limited available street parking. So the proposed ordinance would require one parking space per bedroom of the accessory dwelling unit with a minimum of one parking space per unit. So for instance, if it's a studio unit, they'd be required to have one parking space. If it's a one-bedroom unit, one parking space. Two-bedroom unit, two parking spaces. And these would be in addition to the four parking spaces that are required for the single-family residents. And you can see there the parking exceptions. The standards that I just mentioned would not apply to the projects that are located within half-mile of transit, historic district, within a half-mile, sorry, same block of a car share program, within one of the areas I mentioned about the permit parking, or if you're converting an existing space. As you can see here on the map, what we're showing is, like most of you are aware, Santa Ana is a pretty transit-rich community, and on this map, you're going to see the transit stops for express-bus routes that have a headway or service of 15 minutes of less, or less. So what that means is a bus comes to this stop every 15 minutes or less during peak traffic times. So if you're within one of those pink areas identified on the map, those properties would be exempt for providing parking for the accessory dwelling unit, but would still have to provide parking for the residents. If the property is outside of those pink areas, it would have to provide parking for the house and additional parking spaces for the accessory dwelling unit. The other is scale and size of accessory dwelling units and concerns about how they may impact existing community character and scale, because in added scale, ADU can negatively affect the neighborhood character and also privacy with neighbors. State law does allow the city to regulate the maximum size of accessory dwelling units as long as at least what's called an efficiency unit is allowed, and as long as they're no larger than 1,200 square feet. So the proposed ordinance recognizes that the size of an ADU is often contextual, so what may be small in one neighborhood might be large in another neighborhood. So what the proposed ordinance does is allows for accessory dwellings to be based on a percentage of the existing residents, and that's 50% of the total living area of the primary house, excluding garages. And the maximum size would be 750 square feet. And also to address neighborhood character and privacy concerns, there'd be design guidelines that would be implemented as well as height restrictions. So for a detached unit, the maximum height would be 15 feet, and for an attached unit, the maximum height would be what is allowed of the primary residence. So if it's an R1 property, it'd be 27 feet or two stories. As you can see in the graphic there, an ADU location on the site would be limited by the setbacks that would be applicable to accessory dwelling units. It would have a rear yard setback of 20 feet, front yard setback of minimum 20 feet, side yard setbacks of 5 feet, or if not, in an R1 zoning district, whatever setbacks applied to that zone would also apply to the accessory dwelling unit. Based on the analysis provided to you in the report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment 2017-4 to revise Chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes.
Before we conclude our staff presentation, I would like to make a few comments to address some of the process that we went through. It was our intent to draft for you tonight an ordinance that we felt reflected the values of the community. And I know that Ricardo mentioned this in the report, but he also mentioned that the state says that the ordinance must not be overly excessive or prohibitive. So to that end, the city did hire an attorney who specializes in this type of legislation and has looked at it over the time period since January when it first went into effect. And one of the things that he did allow us to do, which we originally thought that we would not be able to do, was he felt that it was legally defensible to go forward with maintaining the city's park deficiency areas, which we had included in, which were included in the previously adopted ordinance, but were negated by the new state legislation. The second thing that he did, he did provide guidance for us on was the parking restrictions and defining that area. We did look at many options, most of which provided us with more exempt areas than were, than would have been allowed in terms of exempt parking, would have exempted the city from onsite parking. So this, we did adopt that onsite parking. We can define what public transportation is. A city can define public transportation. And we took this definition and we took it and we worked with the attorney to find one that would be within the parameters of the state law. So the definition of headways and express lines, using that definition was one that was reverbered by the attorneys as well as the park deficiency areas. So with that, I believe that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Candia. Thank you, Ricardo. Does the Commission have any questions at this? Commissioner Besserra?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions. In regards to the deficient open space provision, I noticed in your slide presentation, there was something about the minor exception again. I'm looking at the draft ordinance that's in our packet, and I don't see any language or maybe I'm missing it. Is there a specific section?
Yeah, it's at the end. Appeals, I guess? Would that be where you guys, yeah?
The appeal process is in the...
It's Section 41-194.14, Appeals of Planning Manager's Zoning Administrator Decision.
Okay. So which is different from what we've had in the books, and was it, was it the opinion of the attorney that we needed to have this minor exception provision, or is this something that staff wanted to incorporate?
This is something that we incorporated for those unique properties that while may fall into one of those areas, may still be able to mitigate the fact that there's no open space provided in the city, but may be large enough to provide open space onsite for residents of the site, of the ADU and the single-family.
Okay. My next question is on the minimum size. So currently, if I'm reading the draft ordinance correctly, we have 220 square feet. So it's just over half the size of, say, a garage. Is there a reason why we're doing 220 feet? And the reason I ask is, in looking at other codes, Anaheim's got a minimum of 400 square feet for their ADU ordinance. When I think of a studio, you know, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's like 500 or 600 square feet here in the city?
Something, yeah.
Yeah. So how do we get down to 220? So we're saying one-third of the average studio would be the minimum size for an ADU?
The state law says that our ordinance has to allow what's considered an efficiency unit, and the efficiency unit definition is per building code standard of 220 square feet.
So might have believed in that Anaheim is out of compliance with the state?
I'm not sure if their ordinance is in compliance or not. I haven't taken a look at their ordinance, but based on the feedback we've received from our legal team, that's the standard that is outlined in the state law.
Okay, because Anaheim does have on the books 400 square feet for a minimum. And then on the height, how did we arrive at 15 feet?
15 feet is the accessory building max height allowed for any accessory building in residential zones. So if you're going to be constructing a workshop or a poolhouse, that would be the maximum height that's allowed.
Currently today, without...
Currently, so it'd be consistent with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Commissioner Alderati?
Thank you. How many code enforcement cases do we have for unpermitted units?
I don't have an exact number of what the code enforcement cases are, but having worked at the counter a number of years now, we do see conversions of garages as a pretty frequent code enforcement violation at the counter.
And would that be citywide or within certain neighborhoods?
I haven't really been taking note of what neighborhoods predominantly have these issues, but from my experience, citywide.
Okay. So the reason why I ask is because I'm a little bit troubled by the open space standard, because it blocks out a big portion of the city, from what I can see just looking at the map. And the point of some of this legislation was to increase the availability of affordable housing. So that is a significant portion that we're blocking out. But, so I'm wondering, what was staff's sort of policy rationale? Is it specifically because of its proximity to the park or distance from the park?
Right, so since the whole city is below what our current general plan land use element calls out as the goal for open space deficiency, we wouldn't be able to say not allowed in the entire city. So we looked at specifically proximity to these places. What's walking distance to a park? What's a reasonable distance that someone would walk to a pocket park or a neighborhood park? And then these are standards that seem to work when it was applied in the previous ordinance, so we continued with that criteria.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? I've got one question that, actually, two questions. When you look at the 2003 ordinance, I think the number that was quoted by staff was less than 40 permits occurred over the period of 13 years?
It was approximately 30, correct.
Right. Now we're looking at, at this point in time, I believe there's 40 permits that have been submitted since the beginning of this year?
Approximately 40 applications or so.
Okay. Given the 40 applications that we've received, are they in compliance with this proposed ordinance?
Some of those would not be.
Because?
Either setbacks or height. For instance, there's a couple of accessory dwelling unit applications currently that are proposed at two-story detached, so you have a situation where the accessory dwelling unit is actually going to be taller than the primary house in front. And that would be something that would not be permitted per the current, or per the proposed ordinance.
And the reason why those are accepted at this point in time is because that falls under the current state legislation?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Appreciate the answer on that, Ricardo. Phil?
I just, for what you just said right now, so you're saying right now, in the draft ordinance, that if I was to have, let's say, a single-story house, R1 zone, technically just on my primary unit, I can go up to 35 feet. But at this point, I'm only at, you know, a single story. I go to build my accessory dwelling unit in the back. You're saying that I cannot go above that one story? Because what I read in here was that it said that based on the underlying zoning district. So if the R1 would allow a structure to go up, or what do we...
So it'd be the primary building would be allowed to go two stories. So if you wanted to, say, build the second story of your home as an accessory dwelling unit, you could do that. But if it was a detached building, you'd be limited to one story.
And where would that limit me?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Where in the ordinance does it say that I can't do that? In other words, how, what prevents it, within the ordinance, what prevents me from having a two-story unit versus my single-story primary unit?
It's in Section 41-194.8, the standards for detached accessory dwellings. A detached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 15 feet in height as measured from the lowest adjacent grade of the structure to the top of the structure.
And you said that there was somebody that had applied for a two-story unit?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I've got the question, and would, should this ordinance go through, would that mean that the current applicant would not be able to move forward with that particular project as stated?
It's my understanding that the rules that were in place when they submitted their application would continue to apply until their project is either withdrawn or approved or completed.
Okay, fair enough. One last question, and that is, if we look at 2003 and we look at 2017, where would the differences outside of equal to equal, where would the differences be at this point in time?
Differences in the ordinance language?
Right. I mean, you know, the ordinance language for 2003, maximum size of the unit was 750 square feet, or 50% of the property. The state ordinance gives up to 1,200 square feet at this point in time. So we're basically going down to 750 at the same level we were in 2003 ordinance. So looking at that, apples to apples, if we go across, where would we find variance to this that would be outside of the two items which falls under the state?
A majority of the proposed ordinance is based on that 2003 ordinance. Where they do differ are where the state has certain requirements related to existing spaces being converted, setbacks not being applicable to those structures, as well as the restrictions, or I should say, exceptions to the parking requirements. So if you fall within one of those five exceptions not requiring parking, I think for the most part, that's pretty much it. The rest of it is based on the 2003 ordinance. And then the ordinance itself was restructured a bit, even though the language is about the same, to make it more user-friendly.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in the section that allows for the minor exceptions, it says, let's see, any person agreed by determination of the planning manager to disapprove plans and drawing submitted pursuant to Section 41-194, may file an application for a minor exception. So it sounds like this isn't just simply on the open space deficiency portion. It sounds like anybody could apply for a minor exception to any part of this ordinance? Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ricardo. Thank you, Candia.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes.
I have one question.
Ricardo, I noticed that there's a couple provisions in there that are going to hopefully prevent the Airbnb dwelling units, should they be approved, from being used as a rental or Airbnb. So I appreciate that. Is there anything in the application process going to maybe note that, or will they be able to advise that that is unacceptable at the time that they're applying? Because I'd be concerned that somebody spent the money to do that and then go out and try and, you know, put it on the Airbnb market.
Definitely. If approved, we would then move forward with developing an application as well as a handout or a packet that all applicants would be given, and that language would be included there to make everyone aware of that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
For my own edification on that, what is the Airbnb situation at this point in time from the city's perspective?
For the ordinance itself, it would not be allowed citywide. I'm not sure.
There's two provisions in the, in the Section 41-194.6. It says, "The accessory dwelling unit shall not be rented for periods of less than 30 days." It says, "The accessory dwelling unit shall not be rented for periods of less than thirty days, and the primary dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit shall be continuously occupied by at least one person having an ownership interest in the lot." So I assume that's to cover that situation?
Right, so, sorry, go ahead.
Could you still rent out a room in someone's house?
If it was a roommate situation, you would be able to.
Well, but, okay, so let me be more clear. Could you rent out a room for a night?
For Airbnb?
Yeah, so if you have a home, a three-bedroom, two-bath home, and you want to rent out the third, whatever, one of the rooms, it's not detached, it's not an accessory dwelling unit. It's just a room, which is what a lot of what Airbnb is based on.
This ordinance only applies to accessory dwelling.
Detached, or detached.
This accessory dwelling. So any part of it that wasn't accessory dwelling in it, that part, it would not apply to. One of the other provisions of the ordinance that I, I'm not sure that we noted that was continued over from the past ordinance is there is a covenant provision here for owner occupancy that would require owner occupancy. And it could be of either unit, either the main unit or the smaller unit if you were downsizing.
Yeah, no, I thought that was an addition, so you don't have absentee ownership. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments, going once, going twice? Okay. Madam Secretary, do we have any written communication at this point in time?
Mr. Chairman, all correspondence received is included with your package.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the meeting to public comment. Please note that each person who is asked to speak, you have three minutes. I would appreciate if you'd stay to the three minutes. We have three people that have asked, that have asked to speak. I'm going to start with Julie Humphries.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Julie Humphries. My husband and I have lived on North Ross Street for over thirty years and raised our children there. I am an attorney, and I have also been on the Board of Directors of the Flora Park Neighborhood Association off and on for the past two decades, though I'm here tonight in my personal capacity. For the past ten years, my sister and her family have lived nine houses down the street on one of my, on my street, on one direction, and my parents have lived nine houses down the street and another house on my, on my block. I have deep roots in and I care about both my neighborhood and the city of Santa Ana. A short while ago this summer, my elderly parents advised that they no longer wanted the responsibility of maintaining a separate family home and prefer to live in a cottage to be built in our backyard, a true granny flat. This way they can be on the premises, still have some independence as a couple, but we would share meals, the backyard, and be there to care for them as they become more infirm. I was greatly dismayed to learn for the very first time at the last meeting about the proposed twenty-foot setback for ADUs under this new ordinance. This was not included in the public documents containing the draft ordinance. Of all the restrictions proposed to be placed on the construction of ADUs in Santa Ana, this seems to be the most egregious and so clearly designed to act as a barrier to the construction of such units. The stated reason is to make these units conform with the setback requirements applicable to the main home. But ADUs are not main homes. They're never intended to be main homes. They are subsidiary structures, accessory dwelling units. The purported reasoning is also faulty. Since two thousand and three, the city of Santa Ana has been perfectly fine with a ten-foot setback for ADUs, but now suddenly it's requiring a twenty-foot setback. Of all the restrictions in the draft ordinance, this seems clearly subject, the most subject to challenge. I suspect my backyard is larger than most in Santa Ana, yet this proposed setback requirement would have a severe limitation on my ability to build a granny flat for my parents, and is clearly contrary to state law, which prohibits unreasonable barriers to the construction of ADUs. I respectfully but strongly urge that the commission not adopt this twenty-foot setback requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. James Kendrick?
Again, hello, commissioners. Jim Kendrick, eleven-fifteen Freeman, Santa Ana, Washington Square. ADUs are, unfortunately, I think they're going to be here, but I just want to look back again, I mentioned earlier, thirty years ago, conversion of garages, setbacks. I know people that have, we call them granny flats or whatever, but again, my concern is the parking situation in the neighborhoods. If something, if a garage is converted, I believe it says you can convert a garage? If I'm not mistaken, but where are these people going to park? And again, you brought up the RBNBS. I, in my driving around town, they are RBNBS in this city. And they're not just in the, they're in some of our best neighborhoods. Because I pick them up and take them home. So they are here. How are you going to, how are you going to stop that? There's no way of controlling what people, once they build these residences in their backyards. I understand what Julie's saying. We all want to take care of our parents. We all get to an age, we need help sometimes. But it's very, very close. I mean, drive through the neighborhoods and see what the overcrowding is doing. Is this going to affect the parking in the neighborhoods? And are the, are, better neighborhoods going to start to see the overflow of parking? The neighborhoods that are probably going to build these, the parking is already bad. So I, maybe the city starts to need to looking at, how are you going to handle this? Maybe you need to go to really start thinking about, like Laguna Beach, and we have to ask the city permits in all neighborhoods to park and make sure we are. Drive through some of the neighborhoods and see how people are putting out milk crates, chairs, to save parking. It's there. I see it all the time. So again, are these little dwellings, how is it going to affect the quality of life in the neighborhoods when people start? Not saying, because code enforcement isn't going to be able to keep track of it, of the permits, because I guarantee, a lot of them are going to be turned into RBNBS, and they're going to be turned into rental units to help subsidize the family's income. Anyway, think about, again, the parking, which I talked about earlier. This item, again, will affect the parking in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, James. Mike Tardif?
Good evening, commissioners and city staff. Along with many concerned residents, concerned Santa Ana residents, I've been involved in the ADU granny flats issue for some time. Residents have attended many community meetings at which a possible granny flats ordinance has been discussed and information has been provided by staff. I'm here in support of the proposed accessory dwelling unit ordinance before you this evening. Staff has stated that they have heard the residents. I believe that is true and that residents' concerns have been incorporated into the draft ordinance. I would like to thank city staff, residents in Santa Ana, elected and appointed officials, including yourselves, for their work in establishing this draft ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission at this time? Hearing none. All the comments will be closed. Do I have a motion to consider item number four?
Commissioner?
Yes.
Before I make a motion, I just want to make a couple comments. I just want to, Ricardo, I appreciate everybody on planning staff that worked so hard during this whole process. I know it hasn't been an easy task and there's been a lot of, a lot of conversation. Up until today, I didn't know we also had retained an attorney to review the ordinance as well. So that, that gives me a more comfortable feeling about, about the ordinance, that it's defendable and that there's been a lot of conversations about that. I did have the question about, the one comment that was made by the speaker is, was, there's a mention that there was a previous setback of ten feet. Can someone answer to that in regards to how, if that's true?
What we chose to do on that setback, the state allowed you to reduce setbacks for accessory dwelling units, but we decided to retain our own, which has been in effect for about ten years. It was, it was modified by the city council about two thousand and five or so. We increased that rear yard setback to twenty feet. Previously, it was ten.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Alderati?
So, so just so I'm understanding that requirement, that's going to be, let's say the woman that came and spoke wanted to build a unit for her parents, would that be twenty feet from the back fence?
From her back, rear property line. It would need to be twenty feet.
Okay, so that's, so would her option then be to do an appeal?
Yes, she would do an appeal. That would be her option.
Because you'd have to have a pretty big backyard to go twenty feet. Like, I don't know what it would be. I'm going to guess like three-quarters of an acre? To make it not look out of place?
Well...
I'm just guessing.
It would, it would depend. If you figure a typical city lot is a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. You have a twenty-foot front yard setback, so then you have a hundred and five feet. If your house is forty, fifty feet deep, then there's, what do you have, seventy feet? No, that's not right, but you have fifty feet in the backyard. So that would allow you some area, but you'd have to design it.
Eric?
And then I have one other question. It's on section forty-one, one-nine-four-point-nine, which it says that exterior stairs, they're prohibited. So does that prohibit the construction of a unit on top of a garage? I was just spitballing on this one, I was...
If it's a detached garage, correct, that would not be permitted. But if it's an attached garage to the primary residence, they would be able to go above the housing garage.
So, but if you wanted to, and then that would be allowed, exterior stairs would then be allowed?
No.
Okay, so then you got to come down through the garage. Somehow through, you got to build an exterior interior stairwell to do that?
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Keteris Lee, did you have a question?
No, it got answered. Thank you.
Phil?
I just want to thank staff for all the work that you guys have done. I know this has not been the easiest issue to contend with, and I know that you guys have done a lot of work to incorporate a lot of the comments that were made by the community, and I think some of the comments that I've heard, I shared them as well, but I think you guys did a great job in addressing them. And I think, just from what I've read out there in different cities and what they've done, I think we're on par with them. I mean, you know, the state has put us in a position to, you know, have to put this in our code, and I'm thankful that we're doing it now versus waiting, because I think there's certain concerns that my colleagues have expressed up here that will happen until this thing becomes effective. So I just want to say thank you for all the work that you guys have done at this point.
Yeah, I'd like to say that we have come a long way, because I think the first time we had this conversation was probably in the September-October timeframe of two thousand and sixteen. And at that point in time, we were just basically looking at what we were going to adapt, which was the state ordinance completely. And now you have listened, as Mike Tardif said, you've listened to some of the comments that have been made in the different neighborhoods, and I think they've been incorporated here, which is a great job on that. I also think that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, but it's my understanding that the city is going to be looking at a parking plan. Public Works is supposed to be doing some work in that area as far as putting together a citywide parking plan? Vince, Candia?
That is correct, yes. They are looking at parking, citywide as an issue.
Right, and when we presented as a commission last week to council, that was one of the provisos that were brought up, that I brought up in the presentation. We need a parking plan if we're going to, I mean, accessory dwelling units are just one of a number of different elements that the state is dictating to us right now. If it's, if it's not accessory dwelling units, it's senior affordable units, it's affordable family units, all of these impact parking. And I think we've done a good job to bring parking back in many respects, to make it the responsibility of the homeowner at this point in time, and that's good. But we have to, we have to realize parking is a problem and it's going to continue to be a problem until we can figure out what we can from a business plan point of view. So thanks on that. Hearing no other questions or comments at this point in time, do we have a motion on item number four? Lynette?
Chairperson McLaughlin, I'd like to recommend that the city council adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-seventeen dash oh-four to revise chapter forty-one zoning of the Santa Ana municipal code. I would also like to ask for one additional thing. I'd like to get a report in about six months that outlines the, the applications, not just the new applications, but the existing applications. I'd like a breakdown of how many did not meet the, the conditions and why? If we could get a breakdown of those statistics. The reason I ask for that is that, like I said earlier, I think you guys did a fabulous job, but I want to make sure that we're not being so restrictive in the ordinance, that we're not allowing them. I think the intent is that we, you know, we want to increase the, the housing because of the housing crisis we're in right now, and that's why the state did what they did to us. And our hands are tied a little bit to make it happen. So if we restrict it so much that we're not allowing units to be built, then what's the, what's the point? So if we could get that, that would be my only additional request on, on this action.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. One other, I just make one other comment, that is, is that with the ordinance put in place, what will that do with respect to unpermitted facilities that exist in the city at this point in time?
Unpermitted accessory dwelling units would still have to come through the same process and obtain building permits to legalize them, and they'd have to meet the same standards that would apply to a new one.
So is that something that code enforcement needs to identify at the, at the start?
That's correct.
Okay. But this will, as an ordinance, help in that respect too?
Potentially.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments at this point in time? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five to zero. Absentee, Ken Nguyen and Petrus Mendoza. Thank you, staff. At this time and place, I'd like to talk about public hearing number five, conditional use permit number two-zero-one-seven dash two-one and variance number two-zero-one-seven dash zero-four to demolish the existing retail building and construct a new express automated car wash facility and to allow a driveway located within a hundred and fifty feet of any intersection at seventeen-oh-three East Seventeenth Street. Do the commissioners have at this time anything to disclose? Hearing none? Please proceed.
Good evening, chairperson, members of the planning commission. This request in front of you tonight is that Rocket Express Car Wash, a conditional use permit and a variance application at seventeen-oh-three East Seventeenth Street. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing approximately twenty-thousand-square-foot building that's been used over the years for furniture store and to construct a fifty-thousand-square-foot car wash with a five-hundred-seventy-square-foot paystation canopy. A total of two parking spaces and eighteen vacuum spaces would be provided. A conditional use permit is required for the car wash use in the C-five Arterio Commercial Zoning District, and a variance is required to allow the driveway, which is within a hundred and fifty feet of the intersection. The next slide, which is an area photo, which you can see the site location, which is located at the northeast corner of Seventeenth Street and Mayberry Street. The zoning is C-five Arterio Commercial with a general plan, general commercial, and the property is approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet. It's surrounded by the Fantastic Cafe to the east, Strip Mall to the west, the Superior Warehouse Shopping Center to the south, and apartment building to the north. It is located in the Meredith Parkwood and Portola Park Neighborhood Association. This is the current site condition. Keep close attention to that, the two huge power pole in front of the property. One of the variances is for a driveway location, which has to... One of the variances is for a driveway location, which has to do with the power pole to the east there. This is the proposed site plan. The car wash entrance will be on Seventeenth Street. The driveway has to be positioned to avoid conflict with that power pole. That's one of the, that's the variance request in front of you tonight. And cars will enter on Seventeenth Street, will go through the car wash tunnel. The car wash tunnel is oriented to Seventeenth Street, which the blower will be, the noise is, the noise depart, which will be open to Seventeenth Street. And then they will have the opportunity to use the vacuum stall to the west of the property, and they will have two exit. They will have the opportunity to exit off Mayberry, and they also have a secondary exit in the alley. They would be able to take access in the alley to the, to the east. This is the floor plan of the car wash facility. This next slide is the proposed elevation. They're taking a kind of like a modern, earthy approach with lots of colors. This is another view from the corner of Seventeenth Street and Mayberry Street. This project was originally submitted to the city in two thousand and fifteen. We have presented that this project to the neighborhood association on different occasions. I would say two to three times. There were concerns raised by the neighborhood association, which primarily has to do with the traffic and the noise. As a result, the applicant was required to prepare noise study and a traffic analysis. These two analysis had identified a number of measures to mitigate these concerns, which including the hours of operation, is limited to AM to PM to avoid the potential conflict, traffic conflict with the school traffic, and additionally, a traffic signal installation, installation at Seventeenth and Mayberry Streets. The noise study identified the requirement of a ten-foot sound wall along the north side of the street and a special coating inside the car wash tunnel to reduce any potential noise caused by the blower. And we also presented this to the planning commission subcommittee on the design issue. Staff found this proposed car wash meets all requirements specified in the C five zoning district, including parking, landscaping, and setbacks, with the exception of the driveway variance. The proposed project will provide well-maintained and operated service to the surrounding communities. We found that this project will support several goals and policies of the general plan. As a result, we are recommending approval of conditional use permit number twenty seventeen dash twenty-one and variance number twenty-seven dash four as conditioned in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. We also have the applicant's team, including their architect, the operator, and the property owner here, as well as the city's principal engineer here, if you have any questions regarding this project.
Thank you, Andy. Does the commission have any questions of staff? Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Was the San Ana Unified School District contacted regarding this project?
Yes, they were contacted, yes, originally, yes.
And did they provide any comments?
No, they did not.
No comments, even though Muir Elementary is just up the road?
Yes, they originally had contacted, I believe, the applicant. There was some discussion, dialogue between the two of them, but there were no subsequent concerns after those dialogues.
So, did San Ana Unified School District indicate to you that they were okay with the project, then?
I did not receive any official support or objective of this, from the San Ana Unified School District.
Okay, I just, I ask because Muir Elementary is right up the street. And then my last question is, so, when I was reading the staff report, it was describing that the applicant's contribution to the traffic signal would be thirteen percent. How does that get calculated? Why thirteen percent? Just help me understand it, at the very least.
If I may, the city's principal engineer will respond to that.
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Ted Higgins, Public Works Agency. Commissioner Becerra, it's, the calculation on that is, it's generally just the project trips divided by the growth expected in the area. And so, I think the numbers were... The numbers were around seventy trips divided by about three hundred trips in growth, in general.
So, the area that we're talking about, what's kind of the rough boundary? I mean, I assume it's not citywide, you're talking within a very specific area?
Oh, I'm talking about specifically the intersection where the, that fair share was identified for, which is Seventeenth and Mayberry.
Okay, so thirteen percent is coming from the car wash?
Yes.
Help me understand the rest of the percent there.
Well, of the funding, the developer will, will put, put in the traffic signal. It has to be complete prior to certificate of occupancy. And then as projects come along, where, where we can identify a, an impact to that same intersection, then the developer would be refunded that amount. So, if a similar project came in in a couple of years, we determine what their fair share was, then, then they would be refunded a, you know, a commensurate amount.
Okay.
And, and we would do, you know, the plan is we're going to do an agreement along those lines.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, staff? Thank you, Andy. Would the applicant, at this point in time, like to comment on the items?
Richard Rassik, I'm here on behalf of the ownership, and Christopher McKenna over here is the applicant. Good evening, commissioners. In regard to this process, we've gone through the entire process, which was very long and very educational, I got to say. We really learned a lot. Every member has had a chance to look at it through the planning department. And I want to tell you, you have an outstanding planning department. I've developed several properties, and I can tell you that second to none, it's a first-class operation here, and I just want to convey that directly as a owner of the property. The property for the last fifty years has been under the same ownership, the Diamond family, and Mr. Diamond will be here to speak with you. This property for the past four years has been vacant. It was a, for fifty years, a furniture store, RB Furniture, Heligmeier. They went bankrupt, and then it went to Monroe Furniture. Monroe went out of business, and for four years, we've been trying to lease the property. I also have an expertise in commercial leasing, and that has been a difficult task. I've been contacted by a church, a marijuana grow facility, which we would never allow, and I know we wouldn't even ask that, Dollar Tree, et cetera. And it's just not functional. The existing building is twenty-four thousand square feet, actually. It's a four thousand square foot mezzanine, and the parking is not sufficient. This zone is C five, and this particular individual, Chris McKenna, has agreed on the traffic signal to fully fund as a condition the full amount of the traffic signal. We've worked with Mr. Higgins and agreed, if and when there are future developments, he would be reimbursed based on the impact. I've told Chris, likely there may not be, and he's agreed that he understands he's putting that money up and probably not going to get it back. But as an applicant, it's important to the community to have this traffic signal there, and it's also important to the operation of this car wash to have the traffic signal there. This is the perfect use with Muir Elementary, because the time that this car wash is open is at eight, and we've agreed to exit, you know, I mean, excuse me, they will not enter until after eight o'clock. That traffic ends with Muir Elementary at eight o'clock. There is, the traffic finishes, and in the afternoon, when there's an impact with the traffic, we've agreed to exit outside the alley and direct the traffic to Sherry Lane, where it then can be dispersed in that direction. I just want to say that I've heard a lot about the demands on your resources, your sewer, your water, you know, with all of the residential. This is a perfect tenant, because this tenant has a one-hundred percent reclaim system. They do not impact your sewer to any great degree. They do not impact your water. It's eco-friendly, and it's an outstanding tenant. We also have dealt with Mr. McKenna in connection with another car wash in Redondo Beach, and he's been a stellar tenant.
Commissioner, any questions of the applicant?
Could you repeat what the operation hours are, hours of operation are?
Eight, eight AM to eight PM.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you. I know it's been a very long process, and Lynette and I got an opportunity to work with you, Design Review Committee. Back then, you mentioned something about you also get involved in the community to give back. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, first of all, thank you all very much for your time and attention to this matter. I know it's been kind of a process, and I really appreciate your attention. In regards to your question, Commissioner Leo, we, we believe in a business model that we obviously are looking at the community as our customers, but we feel that we can be much more successful when we're engaged back with the community. So, in my current car washes that I own, we often do a lot of like fundraisers. We, we sponsor a lot of sports teams. We sponsor a lot of kids' youth activities. We work directly with the schools, with the churches. We try to do, we actually raise a significant amount of money for those organizations. And what we've found is that in giving back to the community, they give back to us, so we have a good synergy moving back and forth, and it's just good business. I mean, we don't just want to take money from the community, we want to actually give back. And we've just found that it's kind of a win-win for everybody, because if we're giving back to the community, it raises our awareness within the community. Therefore, we get more customers, and the more customers we get, the more money we can give back to the community. It's just something we do. Not every car wash does it. In fact, very few do it, but something my partners and I believe in strongly, and we've done it for years, and we definitely want to continue doing that. We like to take advantage of the fact that we do have that school next to us, and we'd like to see what we could do to help them, so that's pretty much the crux of it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Senator, have we received any communication on this item?
Mr. Chairman, the correspondence that we received has been distributed to commissioners.
With that, we will open up the public hearing. And as before, please make sure that you keep your comments to three minutes. We appreciate it. We have a lot of, we have a lot of people that would like to speak this evening. So, if you do that for your friends and your neighbors, please do that. Thank you. The first one is Chris McKenna.
Okay, well, thank you again. Again, I would just like to say, you know, I very much appreciate the opportunity to be able to be considered for this project in your fine city. You guys have, you know, really great staff and have done a very thorough review, and having been through this process before with other municipalities, I can, I appreciate all of you. I very much want to say thanks for the opportunity to be able to allow me to do this business in this city. And, you know, I very much appreciate that we are, you know, a community-based business. And I'm a native Californian, born and raised here, and I just want to say thanks and that I strongly support my own project. Thank you very much.
Leon Felis?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Leon Felis. I'm the architect for this project. And the only thing I'd like to add is that we worked over the past two years with both Public Works and planning on the aesthetics of the building and also the onsite circulation. And actually, some of Public Works' solutions to some of the onsite circulation problems were some that we didn't think of, and they work out pretty well, so. We're also, we also have our sound consultant, our traffic consultant here, if you have any questions for them.
Thank you. Patrick Gibbons?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Pat Gibson. I'm the traffic engineer for the project. I worked with Mr. Higgins to analyze the project from a traffic and circulation and queuing standpoint. I don't want to make a big presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Any questions? Thank you. Michael Gray?
I currently, you have my comment, my statement that I made to you earlier. First of all, there's a number of things that I see wrong with this presentation and the project itself. Within two miles of this project, there are five other car washes. So, I'm looking at it, why would we need another car wash? Second, the traffic on that area of Mayberry is horrendous. San Ana Unified, which is out of their district, has Muir School. They are now currently at a population of over a thousand students. That means my neighborhood, every day, has approximately a thousand cars, because none of the kids that go there live in the neighborhood. We are part of Tustin Unified. So, what happens is, if you have traffic backed up, they start at seven o'clock in the morning. They go through eight-thirty at, eight-thirty in the morning. They're looking at it that they're in by eight o'clock. That's not true. Parents are late. So, we have, for today even, I noticed it, we have traffic backed up onto Seventeenth Street. Backed up on Seventeenth Street. There is no light there. So, my next question is, if you put in a light, are you going to put the ones with the directional signals that turn? If you put in a standard light, it's not going to work, because you're going to have people trying to rush through. So, you're, you're creating more traffic coming into the neighborhood. With that, not only will they try to exit back to Seventeenth, which won't work, because if their driveway is as it's proposed, there's only like four cars that are going to fit before the light turns. If not, they're going to turn in behind the alley, they're going to turn in down Eighteenth and Nineteenth Street, which will impact us during the day. We have people coming, and unfortunately, you have approved this, allowing more and more students at this school. It's overpopulated from what you were proud, that you allowed to begin with. Now, we have students, most of the parents, one, part of them don't live in the San Ana area. The other ones who come don't live in the neighborhood. Muir is not a neighborhood school. Every kid who has to come there has to be driven. So, in the middle of the day, when they're picking up elementary kids from kindergarten, parents are coming in. After school, parents are coming in. They have an after-school program. They're there till six o'clock at night. Parents coming in. They're open till eight o'clock. We're still going to have parents coming in. Their stores are going to be open at the same time. We look at that, and it's really going to impact our neighborhood as far as cars. Right now, we have a thousand cars twice coming to the school every day. I doubt that they planned on that. In fact, the latest number I heard is now, there's now twelve hundred school, twelve hundred students at this school. In fact, the latest number I heard is now, there's now 1,200 school, 1,200 students at this school. Most of them bungalows. You've allowed that. That has impacted the neighborhood. They're there every day. They have Saturday programs. They have summer school programs. We don't even have the summer off from parents driving to our schools. So putting this in, is this going to add just that much more traffic? My concern is, with a traffic light, will it have the green directional left turn? It should, because if not, we've already had one fatality at this corner from parents trying to get in to pick up their kids. Pardon me? Yeah. All I'm hoping is that between the noise, the traffic, I hope that you really consider the neighborhood who live, the people that live there and not because you're looking for another car wash. We don't need six. Thank you.
Next is Gilbert Zamora.
Good evening. I don't know, normally here for councils, council meetings, but this one's a little different. Basically, I'm here, I've been living in the Portola Park neighborhood for about 40 years. We moved in there back in 1978, '77, around that area, that year. I hated the neighborhood so much, I bought the house across from my parents. So now we actually have two houses there. Through the years, we've seen it progress to what it is now. It is very, we've known as sleepy, sleepy hollow. What do they call this, the sleepy something? That's what they call it, because there's no, no incidents. We're starting to get more of the homeless, which was an incident lately, to the last council meeting, going through the, through our area. I know one thing, because I know I work for, for one company I work for. I go through a, I go through a wooden car wash, it's over on Harbor, like on Fairview and Adams. And there's a lot of people going around shiffling through the, through the trashcans, getting for recyclables. And that's one going to be one incident. Two, we have two marijuana shops right around the corner. They're going to be looking for anything so they can, you know, sell, so they can get, you know, their marijuana and stuff like that. Second of all, too, there is traffic all day from kids that go to school there. I know because my great nephews live across the street at my dad's house. They go during the day, they go, there's a, one session that finishes early, another session comes in later, and so forth. They're not, they're staggered because there's so many students in that school now. So as far as that, the next thing I'm going to go to this, to this school district and tell them, why didn't you guys even present anything about this? Because I mean, it's, soon, somebody's going to get hit and get killed because of the traffic. Because it's also a throughfare for people trying to get through from, from Seventeenth and Grand because there's no way to go through. They use, basically, go through the middle there. And that's the one thing. Second of all, too, as far as that little driveway they want to exit on, that's also a throughfare that they use for the parents to take their kids to school. They don't even stop at the stop signs. Then you're going to add this traffic to it? I'm just waiting for somebody to go hit on. And that's going to be soon. I guarantee you that. This happens, then you got Fantastic Cafe there, then you also have Wendy's, then you also have Wells Fargo. Just getting out of, just getting out of those two places, there have been major accidents from there. I mean, you put the car wash in there? It's, and if you put turning signals, it doesn't make a difference. Look at, look at over here on Seventeenth and, I mean, I mean, Tustin and Fourth Street. You can't even make a turn, even go across the intersection, because it's blocked. People don't, don't stop at them. They will even block the intersections. That's what's going to happen there. Regardless, whatever's there, it is, I mean, it's going to happen now. And even if they put the car wash, it's going to happen then. So I mean, to me, I oppose it. And I'm pretty sure a lot of other people are going to be the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. Marlon Hale?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marlon Hale. I'm the Technical Director at Advanced Engineering Acoustics. I've done the noise study for this project. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have in regards to the equipment, noise, and mitigation that is proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Richard Rasek?
Good evening again, and thank you. I wanted to say that it's the community that we're thinking about. And I hear comments when people come up that have lived in this neighborhood. And believe me, we, having 50 years of ownership and experience here, we chose to be here, and we've remained here. Many people sell properties. They're not in the communities. This is 50 years in the same family. So we're part of the fabric of this community. And I can certainly tell you that Muir Elementary did express concerns initially, and so did a lot of the people at the neighborhood group. When we presented the case before them on the second neighborhood group in December and provided all of the facts with the noise studies in, the traffic study in, the fact that we were fully funding a traffic signal at this intersection to help with the existing problem, people looked at the project. And I want to give this community credit. They actually came up and looked at the diagrams, looked at the architectural renderings. And many of them said to me, I was opposed in the beginning. After hearing what you've said and seeing everything, I really have no objection to it. Good luck. And that was nice to hear. I want you to know that right now, what's there, where's the outrage? It breaks my soul to see homeless. It's a tragedy. We feel bad for them. They're breaking into the place. They've broken windows. We've boarded the windows up. Where's the outcry for the people in the neighborhood to want something that revitalizes a neighborhood? And that's exactly what this is. It provides hope. And I'm asking you to give your vote for hope in approving the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Charles Diamond?
Yes, I'm the owner that's been there for the 50 years. I think I look at two. I, I feel that we've looked at a lot of different things to go in there. And because of the hours that a car wash operates and because of the slow periods, which is the high period for the school, we think that this, out of all the different things that can go in that would be viable, it would be the car wash. I have thought of a lot of other things, but they're just not as viable, and they would create more traffic than this would create because none of the, we funding this traffic signal, which will help mitigate the traffic. But the busy times for the school is the slow times for the car wash. And then another feature that the car wash has, we know there's more and more people that are moving into Southern California and especially Santa Ana. The water savings, they, they can't wash their cars anymore. They can't dump their, their dirt into the streets because there'll be more and more, and it'll be harder and harder for the city to handle it. So with the car wash, all the dirt and all the trash that comes off of the cars go into a reclaim system. And the reclaim system, when it gets full, a truck comes and hauls it all away. So none of it gets on the city streets. And also, the water savings, because this is a full reclaim system, really up to date, the amount of water that's being used would be really mitigated. So actually, I feel that no matter what, this is really the best use for this particular zoning. And the zoning is the highest zoning. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Charles. Winston Covington?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff. My name again is Winston Covington. And I came here tonight not to have a big speech or a big presentation, but to talk to each and every one of you, just heart to heart. I've lived in the Portola Park area, the Meredith Parkway neighborhood, right next door to Portola Park, for almost 28 years. With the help of Gil Zamora, who just spoke, I have been the chairman of Portola Park Neighborhood Association since 1995. I lived on Mayberry Street, a stone's throw from this car wash, a stone's throw from the school, for eight years. I loved my house. I loved my neighborhood. But what caused us to move is as John Muir transitioned from a sleepy little school for special needs children to a fundamental school with over 1,000 children, the traffic impact in the area was a nightmare that scared the heck out of my wife. A four-year-old, four-year-old little girl, used to love to play in the front yard. It scared my wife to tears. We moved. We moved to a cul-de-sac. The problem is bigger today than it was then. I invite you to come take a look at the impact that traffic has at the intersection of Seventeenth and Mayberry. I live right on Mayberry and Nineteenth Street. Went right past me every day, in the morning and in the afternoon. It's a two-lane street. Residents park on the street. Come school time, parents are fighting, jostling for a space so they can drop off their kids and pick them up. Space runs out quickly. The, the parents start parking in driveways. They start blocking driveways. They park on the corners of the curbs. This creates a bottleneck throughout the neighborhood that is terrible. Traffic backs up on Mayberry and Seventeenth. This project proposed is right at the main entrance to John Muir, with 1,000 children being driven in and out. Because again, it is a Tustin Unified school area, but this is a San安 Unified school. Traffic is backing up east and west on Seventeenth. I've seen this time and time again. Any one of these guys can tell you it's true. Where the residents, the, the parents get so frustrated, they force two lanes going north to the school. Kids are scrambling everywhere. Now the resident, not resident, the applicant, has agreed to not open till eight o'clock. That helps. But as you've heard before, there are families in traffic and residents and school kids and activities all during the day. They've talked about putting in a light at Mayberry and Seventeenth. And sometimes that would be a help, and sometimes I think that would be a hurt. They've talked about blocking off the side street. What happens in the afternoon? And all these kids are getting picked up again.
Can we wrap it up?
I, I will. I will. In my personal opinion, adding the traffic that would come from this car wash would be the equivalent of lighting a Molotov cocktail. Because it's a recipe for disaster. It's a matter of time before a child is seriously hurt or killed. I ask you to please consider, what would you want to see if you were residents in that area? What would you want to see to protect your children? And please vote no on this project. The last comment I'll say is that it's a good project in a bad location. Thank you.
Thank you, Winston. Debbie McKeon?
Good evening. I, I really didn't plan to speak on this item, but I, some red flags went off. And I just want to share with them, share them with you. Everything Winston said was absolutely true. If you spend any time over there, you can see that it is, it's a traffic mess. And I got to thinking, if you had a signal right there between the Cabrillo corner and that corner as, as traffic flows throughout the day, now you've chopped up a nice section of street where traffic actually moved, where good things, good traffic patterns and good flows. That would, of course, queuing up between those two, that short distance can't be good. I won't belabor that. I want to go back to the description of the, of the building itself. As Neese said, oh, it's very colorful. Well, as I look at the car wash, if it's even remotely similar to the one at First and Cypress, it's just a hideous eyesore. If you, if you want to have a car wash, everyone understands what it is. You don't have to make it be garish and wildly colorful. It can just blend in and be a beautiful, sensible look about it. It doesn't have to look like a circus tent. Also, unrelated to this project itself, but I think it's very important to look at a bigger picture. All of the project, everything that's going on across the street, the Superior Market, the food, the little businesses, it is hideous over there. It is apparent that commercial code enforcement hasn't been there. We can't get anybody there. It's obscene, and it's embarrassing, and it's a major throughfare into our city, and we look like we don't know what we're doing. It is chaotic to look at that. And then if you add the traffic and the signal and some very colorful car wash, really, is that the development that we want at this time in the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Mike Tardif?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I like the mitigating ideas they have here with the traffic signal, which could help quite a bit. I have, I have a couple of concerns. The, I appreciate the sound wall, 10-foot sound wall, and the sound accommodation within the wash tunnel itself. However, there are apartments immediately adjacent, across a very small alley. There will be noise, and it will affect those residents. I know the city tends to pay more attention to people who live in the neighborhoods rather than the apartments. So I'd just like to remind you, I'm sure some of you are aware, that apartment residents are residents as well. It will be very noisy regardless of the mitigating sound. The alley, they say they're going to direct traffic through the alley towards the east, which should be towards Sherri Lane, away from Mayberry. That is a very, very bad idea. That alley is very narrow. It's very difficult for two people, you know, to, going in two directions to, you got to really slow down and be careful. And they're, and they're, at the apartments, right there are there, is where they park. They park under the apartments. They back into the alley. It's just not a good idea. And when you get to the east end of the alley, there's Sherri Lane. People are walking across that sidewalk constantly, coming from the shopping center to the apartments and homes on the north side of Seventeenth. You can't, you can't see to the left traffic because of the people parking on Sherri Lane. And it's very difficult to see the pedestrians that are coming across. You have to slow down. People who live in the neighborhood, you know, are aware of that, and they do that. A lot of people who go through the car wash aren't necessarily part of the neighborhood. It's a bad idea to, to direct traffic to the east in that alley. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone else from the public like to make a comment at this point in time? If you do, please come down and fill out a card. You can do that afterwards if you'd like. Okay.
Thank you very much. David Marsiel. I'm a resident that lives out of Mayberry. And one of the things that, that was, we weren't able to share is that we do have a neighborhood, a website that we use. And a poll was done on the website about what were the thoughts were about approving the project. And it was like 90% against the project. I know that the, our, our chairman will be able to go and provide you with that information if you needed it. And the other thing is, he might want to take a look at, see, there's some of the residents that came. If he wanted to go ahead and just stand up and show the folks that they didn't want to approve the project. And you don't have everyone here, because I know everyone can make it. But as far as, we just want to make, make sure that you guys understood that it is a very, a nice neighborhood, that we'd like to make sure that it stays safe and isn't very nice. So we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David.
My name's Bridget Catalano. I'm property management company for the Monterey Apartments that back up to the alleyway there in, on the north side of the car wash that's proposed. We have that alleyway that they said they're going to use for traffic, which has 20 apartment buildings that are above that 10-foot sound wall that have their bedrooms that back up to that. And also, we have 30 parking stalls that are going to have to back out of their stalls when people are turning that alleyway to go down Sherri Lane. That's going to be a big problem. We recently just put a million dollars into that property to redo our kitchen bathrooms and to make it profitable, and this is definitely going to affect the quiet enjoyment of my tenants at that apartment complex. We were not even allowed to put gates up to our complex to gate our community because of the traffic problems on that street, and this is going to really cause more problems. It's already a really busy area, and I think people will even start using our other driveway to go through to Sherry Lane. So, we definitely oppose it. I was not contacted about this in the beginning. This is, I've heard about it about a month ago, so I'm just addressing it. And I definitely oppose this.
Thank you, Bridget. Does anybody else like to come, please come up if you'd like to comment? You can fill out a form afterwards, but just state your name.
Yeah, my name is William Conklin. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk about some of these issues. Some of these issues just kind of arose to me when I started hearing some of the other conversation, and they really kind of got to me a little bit. First of all, the amount of parking spaces that the car wash, first of all, the car wash does look very nice. The pictures of it and everything do look nice. I'll be the first to admit that. Nice coloration, nice layout and whatnot. The thing that it does have is two parking spaces and eighteen parking spaces for vacuum stations. So, of course, for vacuum stations, you do need eighteen. You need lots of vacuum stations for all the hundreds of cars coming out of the tunnel to be able to properly vacuum their car. And it will need eighteen, if not more. But two parking spaces for all the employees, including the owner that maybe won't be there every day, but will be there often, is not enough. So, they're going to have to park in alleys, in front of other people's homes, really wherever they can to find a parking spot. Two parking spaces for this car wash is not nearly enough. Hundred percent reclaimed water system? I have looked at that. There is no such thing. There will be water that goes through the clarifying tanks that will go from one tank to the next, to the next. A lot of systems about this size will have about ten clarifying tanks. The excess water that can't be reclaimed will go down, will go down through the sewer system. No two ifs, ands about it. It will not be a hundred percent reclaimed water system. Giving back to the community for fundraising, of course, a lot of car washes do that, and I think that's an admirable concern. That, that's not a significant thing. It's not like every day they're going to be giving to different sports teams and whatnot. It's just sort of a little, kind of a nice, little, nice thing, I guess. I think the real big thing here, that there's going to be a thousand to twelve-hundred cars per day, not from day one, but from day, let's say, three, four, five, six months down the road. From an express car wash of this size, there's going to be a thousand to twelve-hundred cars, if not more, going through that car wash on an every day. That's going to create a huge amount of traffic. School for special needs, which this school is, people don't just drop off their kids and say, "Here, you can go ahead and walk across the street. You know, these kids know how to do this." The special needs kids don't need that, don't, can't do that. They need help, they need help from the parents. The parents have to, actually have to stop and park their car and assist their kids across, and then come back. So, their cars are there for a while. Five car washes, five express car washes within a very short distance, I think it was within a mile of this car wash. The last thing that this neighborhood needs is a sixth express car wash near their, near that site. And just one last thing that I'll finish up with, the noise problem. The noise problem from compressors. These are giant air compressors. These aren't little air compressors. They make a ton of noise, even enclosed in a building. Things from the giant motors, the giant hydraulic motors, the high spray water equipment, like from the prep guns and all, from all the brushes and whatnot. It's going to be a huge noise problem that especially the residents that are right close to the car wash are going to experience, and it's not going to be very nice.
Thank you, Winston.
That's really all I had to say. Thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
If you'd like, if you'd like to come up and talk, please do so.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Picard, and I live on Mayberry near the apartments.
Can you move the mic a little closer to you?
I live on Mayberry right next to the apartments.
Okay.
And something just came to my mind that, just about every day, I don't know the reason exactly, but they walk children from the school over to Wendy's, and they get them special for when they're good kids, I guess, or something. And they take them over there and get treats for them, balloons and stuff. But, and so they're walking up and down the street during the daytime, too, between breaks and stuff. So, that's another, another time that the kids are out on the open streets.
Thank you. Anybody else at this point in time have a, would like to speak? Hearing none. The public, the public speaking part of this is closed. We'll bring it back to the commission. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Okay, thank you. For the developers and some of the folks that were studying traffic and so forth, I have a couple of questions for you. One, what do you foresee as your busiest time at the car wash?
Busiest time for the car washes are generally going to be usually like a Friday and Saturday. Saturday is usually the big day in that industry, Saturday and Sunday. You will get quite a bit in the later Friday afternoon, starting around three o'clock and later. And then it kind of goes a little bit throughout the day. You'll get a little bit of a morning rush, and then around in the afternoon, around two to three o'clock, because it has a little bit of a dip. So, that's what we were talking about, like it kind of would line up with the, the school kids getting out, because actually when our slow time will start. So, what we are just going to do is simply chain off Mulberry for that twenty, thirty minutes, allow the cars to exit out the, the, the alleyway. And we, of course, would have, you know, signs up, hey, watch out for the kids, be cautious in the traffic, and watch out for people backing up. It, it, it sounds, you know, like it's like hundreds and hundreds of cars coming through every hour. I mean, I wish it was that much. It's definitely not. Car about every, it's like forty cars an hour, so.
So, the only time you would have the alley accessible to your clients would be between two and three? Otherwise, it will be shut off?
Well, we would, we would actually want to make it accessible really any time that we thought it would be advantageous for the, for the traffic in, in, in being cautious in at the school and the school kids. So, that was, we're kind of flexible there, so whatever. The traffic, my traffic consultant would probably be better.
Okay. And then I still have one more question. I mean.
You have another question?
Yeah. My other question is, have you considered perhaps relooking at the hours that you'd be open? Just to give the neighborhood, I mean, I understand they want to preserve their, their neighborhood, but I also understand that, you know, it's been a sore eye for four years on that corner, and whatever we put there will bring traffic and other people, and if a restaurant's there and they want a liquor license, I mean, we can go down the scenarios, but would you be willing to open at nine? So that, that, that just doesn't, you know, and then on the weekend, open earlier?
Well, we actually wanted to open at seven. And we.
That wouldn't work.
That wasn't going to work. So, we made the, we made the accommodation to work at, to open at eight. Now, remember that, that when we open at eight, we, their cars are coming in off Seventeenth. So, Mulberry and that intersection isn't affected by our traffic coming in. By the time they make their way to the car wash, it's around eight fifteen or so by the time they start exiting. And we're happy to kind of hold off the Mulberry exit, you know, until the traffic is well clear around eight thirty, and then open Mulberry up. So, again, having that, that double exit to back, I thought was really ingenious, and that was something that, that planning came up, that you guys came up with, which I thought was great, so.
And remember, Commissioner, that intersection will now be signalized. So, every sixty to ninety seconds, we get a green light, and we clear all the traffic out of southbound Mayberry, which isn't what happens now. Now, people have to sit behind a stop sign and wait for a break in Seventeenth Street traffic. So, that intersection with the car wash in place is going to work much better than it works right now without the car wash there. Again, we heard a lot of numbers today about how much traffic this is going to generate. This only has the capacity to wash two hundred and fifty to three hundred cars a day. So, we're looking at a peak hour in the afternoon, the busiest Friday hour, afternoon hour, of thirty-five cars in, and once those cars are washed, thirty-five cars out. So, that's one car every other minute. So, when we, when traffic exits from school and Mayberry gets used heavily, it's about a twenty to thirty-minute time period. If we close that and send traffic down the alley, we're looking at a third of thirty-five cars leaving. We're looking at sending ten cars out that alley in that time period. This is not a huge set of numbers we're talking about.
Because I know when I've gone to Fantastic at lunchtime, there are cars, I mean, it's, it's a well-used area between the tenants, Fantastic, Wells Fargo, and Wendy's at lunchtime. I'm guilty of going out the alleyway as well if I don't go the other way. Ten cars, I don't know if that's exact or less. I don't know what would be added to that. But as long as I feel that in certain times of the day, for the safety of the kids and so forth, that that was not used, you know, in consideration of the traffic flow and so forth, that's just something that, if you could do, that would be great. I don't know, I mean, trying to find a happy medium here, is eight thirty better than nine? I don't know. Is, will that half hour make a big difference?
It, it, it won't make much of a difference. Again, remember, some people on their way to work in the morning are going to want to stop off and get a car wash, and that's kind of like a donut shop in the morning. You kind of want to be open in that timeframe. But again, the morning peak hour is thirty, thirty-five trips. So, it's seventeen trips in and eighteen trips out. One car every four minutes in and every four minutes out. So, the morning peak hour, it's important to get those folks that are coming by, but it's not a huge activity hour in terms of the driveway impact.
One thing I would add to that, too, is that the customers of the car wash usually acclimate to the hours of the car wash, so they're going to avoid the car wash up until around eight thirty or whatever anyway, because they're not going to want to deal with the kids. And, you know, they're not going to try and, they're just not going to do it. I've been in this business for twenty-seven years, and they're going to, they're going to work around the hours of the, of the car wash itself. So, like I said, opening at eight, we felt was a good compromise. By the time our customers make it in and exit out, it's pretty much clear of the school traffic at eight fifteen to eight twenty, starting around there. And we, we'll adjust the chain in the Mulberry exit and the alley exit to be, to work at a good throughput, because again, we want to have a good throughput and good circulation. So, we're going to want to do, you know, where it's sort of the, you know, the, the, the flow's going to settle, you know, the happy medium for us, you know, so. And we're, like I said, we'll put signs up everywhere, because we want our customers to be aware of the kids. And again, you know, if we're just known as a car wash, we disregard our neighborhood. We're not going to be a very popular car wash. It's not good for business, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm through with you guys. Thanks. So, in looking at this, you know, I actually happened to, just perfect timing today, to be able to drive over in the vicinity of Muir Elementary right around two thirty, three o'clock, and I saw the traffic backed up all along there. There's no car wash. The site is, you know, obviously not being used at this point, and the area is impacted. So, I appreciate all the testimony from the community, but I got to witness it firsthand myself this afternoon. It's impacted. And, and I think that, you know, for this commission, we actually had a car wash come before us. I forget how long ago it was, the, the one on Seventeenth, or I'm sorry, Westminster and New Hope. Now, that one, one of my biggest concerns was, they were right up against the Mobile Home Park. And, and the applicant asked me, "Well, what could we do to get this thing approved?" I said, "It's very simple. Get those folks to tell me that they're okay with this thing. They're okay with the noise, they're okay with the traffic, they're okay with it." And they actually did. They actually got the folks, not just generically sprinkled through the development, but folks literally along the wall of that site. I haven't heard any of that tonight. Nobody has come out and said, "Well, you know, maybe I can deal with it." I mean, yes, there's compliments on the style. There's always, you know, good architecture, but that doesn't mean the use would work in this particular instance. And so, at this point, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to actually make a motion that we adopt a resolution denying CUP number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-one and variance number two thousand seventeen dash zero-four.
I will second that with comments.
Okay.
I, I can, you know, ju- just looking at other projects that we looked at with, from car washes, a lot of the issues was stacking, car stacking at peak hours. So, taking away from the situation of the, the, which I, I know, it, it, the problem with the traffic from Muir isn't going to go away, whether you build the car wash or not. It, it, you know, potentially get worse, but that's not going to go away. But take away from that and just looking at the actual variance of adding the driveway close to that intersection. If we, even if we put the signal, if, at peak hours of the, of the car wash, there's a potential of stacking onto Seventeenth, which then poses, to me, a greater risk factor for accidents, pedestrian incidents. And I, I think Debbie made a really good point when she said, if you put a signal on that, you really impact the flow in that area, because now you've got a, a traffic signal on Cabrillo, you've got a traffic signal on Mayberry, then you have a traffic signal on the other. Linwood, yeah, on Linwood. So, you're just, you're, you're stop and go, you're stop and go, you're stop and go. I, I think that right now, there's a pretty good little sense of some flow there, and, and it may even be impacted, you know, I'm sure it's probably a problem for the parents trying to get out onto Seventeenth. And that signal may happen, but, but it definitely is going to impact the flow on Seventeenth. So, I, I'm in a place right now that I'm just not willing to support the variance for the driveway for the sheer fact of the stacking and the potential problems it could have. In addition, I think using the alley is a horrible idea. An alley is not a street. It's not intended to be putting cars into that alley to take it off of another area. So, all you're doing is putting into the alley, and now you're impacting people that are living in the, that have to park in the apartments. So, I, I think using an alley for that small period of time, I think is a horrible idea as well. So, with, with that, that is, that is the reason I will be supporting the motion.
Cynthia?
I, I do love the project. I, when you guys brought it, I thought it was, you know, I still do think it's great. But I, that's why I was trying to find a compromise with, with ours. Because over in my neighborhood, we're facing the same situation coming our way with securstrum and homes being built there and coming into the school at peak times and so forth. And that's just a, a hard thing to, to deal with as it is, when it's so impacted. So, there are things that I love about it, but then I want to hear, you know, and respect the community as well, so.
Commissioner, if I may.
No. We're done with public, we're done with the public hearing. Sorry.
So, that, those are comments I wanted to add. I'm done.
Okay. From, from my perspective, I mean, obviously, this is a traffic issue, but John Muir, to me, is no different than Diamond, Carr, San安 High School. There's always traffic around the schools in the mornings and in the afternoons. There isn't one school in this district that doesn't have a traffic issue in one, one's, one form or another. I, I don't see this as a traffic problem as much as, the, the concern I have is that we have one car wash that's on Seventeenth and Baker, and that car wash was just a rebuild of an existing car wash. And since it was rebuilt, the noise level has been unacceptable for the neighborhoods, the neighbors in the surrounding. the neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood. And I just feel that, you know, one of the things that we have to kind of figure out is, uh, what, if anything, is going to be done from a noise perspective, because that's my biggest concern. And, you know, noise engineers have come up and said, this is what we've got and this is what we, but at the end of the day, it's, it's the, it's the vacuums, the washing machine, the washer itself, and any other noise that you've got. In, in that time of the day, you're going to have a lot of noise, and I think it's going to impact the neighbors. And I think the fact that it's so close to the apartments right there, I think that in and of itself is an issue, and it's since we've heard from Bridget, and she said that this is one of her issues and concerns, I think that's one thing we have to listen to as a, as a neighborhood, and how the neighborhood's reacting with respect to, you know, the business coming in. So, having said that, I'd like to have a vote at this point in time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four to zero. Absent is Eric Alderetti, Ken Nguyen, and Beatrice Mendoza. Moving on. Work study, small lot division subdivisions, Vince.
Mr. Chairman, Ricardo Soto is going to leave that, that discussion here for you this afternoon or this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we're going to be sharing some information about a small lot subdivision, draft ordinance that the city's been exploring over the last few months. And the things that we hope to accomplish tonight and be sharing with you is, what is a small lot subdivision? Differences or commonalities between small lot subdivisions with condo or townhome projects? Some facts about subdivision, small lot subdivisions, and then what those benefits of small, small lot subdivisions are, as well as sharing some examples of small lot subdivisions that have been constructed in LA, as well as, I think there's an example in there from Costa Mesa, where there's a number of communities in the Southern California area that have adopted small lot subdivision ordinances, as well as sharing some preliminary language that we are going to be proposing as part of our ordinance. So first, what's a small lot subdivision? Small lot subdivision is a project that constructs several freestanding, single-family dwellings on lots that are smaller than a conventional, single-family lot, on properties that are zoned or that multifamily residential is allowed. So this wouldn't be a type of product or a use that would be allowed in a single-family residence. This would be looked at in multifamily zones where condos and multifamily is already allowed. As you can see from the graphic there, this is taking one lot, splitting it into three, and providing instead of a lot where you could have three apartment units, you could have three individual, single-family homes, creating homeownership opportunities where each property owner would own the building as well as the land underneath the building itself. And then each lot would then be accessed either through a shared access, as shown here in the graphic, or through, through the creation of a commonly-owned lot that, that would then serve as a drive aisle to access each of the lots. So first thing, are these, are these like condominiums and townhouses? Kind of yes and no? There are some similarities, and again, some things that are a little bit different. So a townhouse and a condo product have shared foundations and walls. A small lot subdivision, each home would have its own foundation and its own set of walls, and they would be freestanding. Uh, some of the examples I'm going to be sharing with you do appear and kind of read like a townhouse, but each unit is independent of the next, and there is actually a space in between each building, and each building sits on its own foundation. So again, each building owner also owns the land underneath the building, which is different than a condominium or a townhouse product, where all the owners of the condo share ownership of the entire site. In these types of products, each building owner would be the owner of the land under the building. And something that's slightly different from a condo or townhouse product would be homeowner associations. Depending on how a small lot subdivision is designed, you may not have lots that are owned between the different property owners. You may just have, similar to what I was sharing in this graphic here, a situation where access is provided over private property to your neighbor through some kind of agreement. Uh, and this, in cases like these, since there's no common, uh, lot or lot that's owned between all the different property owners, there's a potential there for not requiring a, a homeowner's association. So some facts about small lot subdivisions, I think I mentioned some of these already. Like this product here appears as though the buildings are connected, similar to a townhouse, but each building is actually separated. Uh, some of the examples that I'm going to be sharing have even down to like a four or five inch separation between each building, and then the space between the building is then concealed through some kind of architectural feature or something to conceal that gap and then prevent, you know, animals or different things from falling in there. Um, again, each lot is independent of the next. Each lot would provide parking for the residents on the lot, and again, each lot would have its own owner. So what are some of the benefits of a small lot subdivision? So one, it offers an alternative to a traditional, single-family residence. Some folks want to get into homeownership but cannot afford to buy a home in what is a traditional, single-family residence. So what this allows is a smaller, single-family residence in a zone that allows multifamily already, where someone, you know, a young person or someone wants to enter the, the market, start off in this, and then if they choose to later upgrade into, say, a traditional, single-family residence. Number two, creates homeownership opportunities. We're looking at sites currently that would allow multifamily apartments, and then looking at opportunities to allow home, homeownership opportunities on those same sites. And then financing options, because of the different, um, type of development, and there's no shared, depending on how it's designed, no shared lots, and it may change the financing options for developers, hoping that some of these, um, lots that are underutilized now, if presented with this option, may result in a potential project. Uh, also, it helps address affordability issues. So like I was mentioning before, someone that is looking to enter into the market may not be at a place where they can enter into the traditional, single-family market, but this would be an option for them, similar to a townhouse or a condominium product. So this is one of the examples, um, in Eagle Rock. You can see there, this was pretty similar to the graphic that we shared, is a common aisle or drive aisle that accesses each site, and then each lot would then have, you know, the home and then the parking for the home on each site. You can see there, just landscaping, what we're looking at is, well, I'll get into that in a second, but landscaping, what we'd find in a traditional development, and looking at compatibility with surrounding uses, and what you would look at is making sure that the density that's already allowed in the general plan, that's what these would be allowed to build up to. So it wouldn't be increasing density, but just changing the, the use type, from say, multifamily to, in this case, a small-out, single-family subdivision, but the unit count would actually remain the same. Here's another example. Um, this one is in the Silver Lake area. I think this one was an award winner, and we had the opportunity to tour a few months ago. Um, this was kind of going down a hill and incorporated a public utility easement in front to act as the open space to the units. It has access from the rear through an alley, and each, like, like this one again, it reads from the front like a townhouse product almost, because they appear attached, but each building is separate from the next, sitting on its own foundation, its own lot. Here's another example from Van Nuys. This is a detached product. Some people may have watched those TV shows where they talk about tiny houses on trailers and things like that. This is not, um, tiny house on a trailer. This is a traditional house. It just happens to be on a smaller lot. In these cases, the footprint happens to be a little bit smaller. So they have two, this project is kind of unique because it has two different types. On the, uh, top part of the, uh, site plan there, those units actually front a street. So those would read on the street like a traditional family, single, uh, like a traditional single-family neighborhood would. It just happens that the lots are smaller. On the second half, at the bottom of, of that, uh, site plan, this one is accessed through a shared drive aisle, and then each small lot that is created takes frontage off that small lot, off that drive aisle, sorry. So for the proposed ordinance, or what we're exploring and hopefully be presenting to you, um, in the next few weeks or months, is adopting an ordinance where we'd be looking at allowing small lot subdivisions in three areas. So in the transit zoning code, SD 84, specific plan two, so in the transit, uh, I'm sorry, the Harbor mixed-use transit corridor, specific plan, and then the Metro East overlay zone. In addition to those three project areas, we'd also include something, um, that would allow small lot subdivisions to be approved through a specific development. So if there is an opportunity site that presents itself that happens to be outside of those three project areas, they would then have to apply for a specific development to craft zoning standards that would be applicable directly to that project. Uh, some of the preliminary figures that we're looking at is allowing for small lots down to 1,000 square feet with a maximum lot coverage of 70%. And all of the design, setback, height, um, criteria that would be applied as part of this ordinance would just defer to what's already allowed there in those three, uh, specific areas that are identified. And the reason why we initially looked at three, these three specific areas is because each of those areas already has a form-based code that would apply, and that allows certain types of buildings, uh, on those sites. So any small lot subdivision, if, you know, these standards were approved in, in the future, they'd have to design and propose and construct what's already allowed there, and then this ordinance would only allow for the subdivision of the property. The building types itself would all defer back to what's already been approved. Um, and then since those plans allow for multifamily, and we'd be looking at approving those projects as single-family, um, as part of a multifamily project, usually people tend to share private, open spaces and things like that. And since this would be single-family on smaller scale, we're just going to be making slight tweaks to this. So one of the, um, highlights we have here would be each lot would be required to have a 300-square-foot minimum of private, open space per lot. And then again, there'd be some kind of maintenance agreement. Right now, maintenance agreement or HOA, I think we're not sure on where we're going to land on that yet, but there would be some kind of agreement that all of the owners of the properties would have to be members of to maintain any common or shared uses or spaces, sorry. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Does the commission have any questions? Oh, Lynette?
Um, Ricardo, so how do they, how do they get financed? What do they consider this in the, in the housing market for, for financing? I mean, do you just apply for a...
I believe it's single-family.
Single-family mortgage loan?
Yep.
And how, and what kind of insurance they, I mean, I work for AAA, so we would never, we don't insure this kind of stuff, so, because...
There's actually, um...
How do they, what do they, how do they do that? Because you're talking about liabilities and coverages for risks. Do you know how that, how, how they're doing that in Eagle Rock or...
I actually have some personal knowledge of, of something similar. A friend of mine actually owns a similar product in the city of Irvine, and his home is a single-family detached unit, but has a four-inch spacing from his neighboring site, and he insures through AAA. I think he had a couple of questions about what type of building product it was and what use it was classified as, but he was able to be insured through AAA, single-family. It's just, since it's a newer building typology, some of the industries aren't really, um, up to date on, on what's, what's it considered.
So he doesn't share anything with his neighbor then?
No.
There's just a, a smaller space between the two of them?
That's correct.
Ah.
So if, I mean, it would be house, I would think it would be household, you know, not household, but single-dwelling insurance.
Right.
As opposed to if it was condominium or townhouse, then you're typically doing a personal property.
You're not sharing a wall here. You've got an air gap between the two, and then that's where you have the expansion joint to keep the science experiments from happening between the two.
Right.
Ah, okay, got it. Now that makes sense. Okay, so now I'm saying, I was thinking when you said, I thought it was like co-ownership or something like that.
No, it would be each individual, um, lot separate, walls separate.
Yeah, you're literally like right up against each other, but there's a small separation.
Right. So that would be one option, and then, you know, there would also be the option to have detached units.
So we're just allowing more on a small, smaller units, more of them on a smaller lot?
Um...
Or is the, are the units big?
It could depend. So these are minimums. That's not to say that, you know, everyone's going to be trying to hit the minimum. And then also, um, with building types, I think the market dictates that a lot. Um, like you saw the Van Nuys product, some markets just don't want attached products because they associate that with condominiums or a townhouse. So you may see more detached products where it's similar to the Van Nuys project, where it's just a smaller, uh, side kind of, uh, setback between each unit that may be three or four feet.
Got it.
Phil?
Well, I'm glad that we're actually, uh, considering this and talking about this, because, you know, for everybody that wants to bang their shoes and say, oh, well, we need, you know, more affordable housing, this is one avenue. It doesn't always have to be subsidized. God forbid, the free market can provide a couple of these things. And so I think this is a great vehicle to get us there. I think that for anybody that's a little concerned about density, I think that for all of us that have set up on this commission long enough, we've approved some really high-density projects. So what this does is actually gives somebody the opportunity to enter the housing market and buy a unit, not on a random floor in a big, tall building, but actually from soil up. So I think this is a great opportunity. It's not what we're used to, you know, as far as our typical lots and big setbacks, but I think that, you know, as times evolve and we need to address the housing concerns that we face today, I think this is a great opportunity. Two things that, that stuck out. One is when you're talking about trying to create SDs for these. My, my only hesitation is I can just see people seeing these as, oh, these are special, these are different, whereas other jurisdictions, they allow them in a certain zone, and once you check the box that you want to go for the small lot, then you just kind of go for it. You don't have to create a specific plan for it. So if you're saying it's in the multifamily zones, you know, I've worked on a couple of these in Los Angeles, that's, yeah, you just, you know you're going to trigger the small lot, and then you, you map it accordingly. Um, the other thing I'm just, it's more, cracks me up just from what we were considering earlier with the ADUs. So we're going to require 300, 300 square feet per lot for open space, but we're going to allow people to live in 225 square feet. Just a subtle observation. No, but you know, I, I, again, I, in all seriousness, I think, I'm glad that we're really considering this. I appreciate that you also brought up that, the, um, that it's a good opportunity for homeownership, because I think a lot of people don't see that. As my colleague was saying, you know, is it, is it a condo? How, how does it work? How, how do you get financed as a single-family home? It is a single-family home. As you know, it's a truly divided, I mean, it doesn't look like it from the outside, but it is, so...
Yeah, it doesn't from the outside.
Right, so, but I think it's a great opportunity, and I think there's probably a lot of folks in the city who own land that would definitely want to exercise this provision. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Maybe the ones with the car.
You're good? Um, my question is, so you talked about like a thousand-square-foot lot, and 30% of it has to be open. Um, I mean, is, what's the limitation going to be with regards to height, number of floors on this? I mean, I'm assuming there's a garage on the first, on the bottom level. So are we going two or three levels up?
So that would all depend on which of the three specific plan areas the project would be developed in. So all the height standards would be dictated by what's already allowed in that zone. So say, for instance, someone's going to be proposing a tuck-under product, uh, in the transit zoning code, that would already allow for a three-foot building in that same building product?
Three foot or three...
I'm sorry, three-story, sorry about that. Three-story building.
I was going to say three-foot building, that's a roof tiny.
A little model.
And now we're really pushing tiny.
So three-story?
More around.
Yeah. That's called, that's called, uh, the Fairhaven Cemetery.
Yeah.
So, um, anyway, so, so in other words, like, we just talked about Harbor Corridor earlier, so you're saying that we could, that the, potentially the building could be five and six stories?
Depending on where on Harbor we're speaking about, and then what building type that they want to develop. Since they're form-based codes, each building type already has a maximum, um, height, and, um, for a condo, a, a multifamily, or in this case, if it was a single-family.
I mean, I, I've, I've gone through Huntington Beach, and, and you see these lots that used to have a, you know, one-story ranch house on it. They now have two homes next to each other, and they're... They now have two homes next to each other, and they're three and four stories high with parking in the back. It's, it's like, okay, so this is going to be, so you're looking at a house that could be 3,000 square feet on top of a 1,000-square-foot lot?
Provided they met all the other development standards. I'm not sure if they'd be able to hit a house that large, but if they did, what this ordinance is doing is only allowing for the subdivision of land. So if they're able to achieve those numbers, they would already be able to achieve those numbers per what the zoning district already allows. So this would not change what's permissible as far as building height or massing or anything like that. It would just allow the property to be chopped up.
Okay.
So if we, if we develop these in like an R2, R3 zone, you're meeting the standards as far as height and all the other requirements. Like you said, though, it's just now about the subdivision and obviously relaxing the setbacks. So you're, you're triggering this separate thing, this small-lot ordinance, but you're able to apply it, because on the screen, you're showing, you know, all the different form-based code areas, but you also included multifamily zones. So it's not just going to be those three areas. I mean, I know they have certain design criteria in the form-based codes, but if I have an R2 property, and I have enough room to subdivide it into three units, you know, common drive aisle, easement, the whole nine yards, as long as I'm meeting the height, the primary lot setback, and those sorts of things that make it at least somewhat from the massing fit in, then I should be okay, correct?
So per the draft, we would only currently be looking at those three areas. So if you're in a R2, that's not one of the three areas identified, so that would not apply to you.
So why, why don't we open it up to the other multifamily zones?
We were exploring, looking at R2 and other zones, but we do have a lot of neighborhoods where it might be mixed R1, R2, or R2 zones that are, you know, low-scale, single-family residential that just has different zoning. So then, you know, neighborhoods like that might be impacted by this. And then also, we were looking at these three specific areas because they already have really tight form-based codes. So we kind of already know what we're going to be getting as far as building typology, look, layout. And then also, those areas or corridors have already been explored as far as more dense housing and how it's going to fit into the neighborhood. So in different conversations that we've had about this, we did explore all the other zones, but we thought, looking at these three specific areas as a kind of way to start, see what we get, and then if we need to come back to you guys and amend what we've done, then we can take that step then. But as a first step, we figured these three areas already have those rules in place that would result in a good product.
Okay. First place I'm bringing them.
Okay, Ricardo, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if I may quickly, Adam Wood from the BIA is sitting in the back there. Maybe, Adam, want to say anything at all right now, or you want to?
Oh, thank you. That was an excellent presentation. It's all about ownership and flexibility, so thank you for your consideration and having to work with you on it.
Thank you. Okay, staff comments. Kendia, Vince?
Just that I had an opportunity to catch the chairman's presentation at City Council last week, I'm sure most of you did too, and he did an admirable job representing this board here, for his commission, so.
Thank you, thank you.
I second that. You did do, we were impressed, and we heard comments back about what a good job he did, so that was, that was very good. Thank you.
Laura, any comments? Welcome for tonight. Thanks for, thanks for filling in. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, Commissioner comments. Phil?
Just a couple things. You brought up a good point earlier about Airbnb. So I just want to know, are we doing anything to tackle that, that issue?
Actually, yes, that is on our to-do list. One of the priorities coming up, probably early next year, it's Airbnb's and short-term rentals in general, yes.
Okay, very good.
So that is on our radar screen.
Very good. And then, just this car wash thing, you know, I know they've gone through the whole song and dance, and they spend a lot of time looking with...
Cars with a wringer?
Yeah, pretty much, you know, worked, I mean, they said they had a good experience with all the planning staff, which is nice to hear. But, you know, you hate to see people work with, you know, have to work with you guys for a year, year and a half on something that comes to us, and then we, you know, we, we don't, we don't approve. And so it's heartbreaking, but how many car washes do we need in the city? I mean, it just seems like these things are popping up on every little corner, and, and I mean, they were right saying, you know, we're finding them every two miles. And so when is enough is enough?
We now have direction that we can take to them, to say that the planning commission has some concerns with the number of car washes in this location, and that they may want to consider the amount of time and energy they want to invest in this. So that's, that's a good thing that came from this. We did talk to them about those concerns. However, they were very, very committed to proceeding.
It sounds like it.
Committed to the extent that they're paying over $400,000 for a traffic signal.
Yeah. It sound, it sounded like that they were, they want it. But yeah, definitely, I mean, my concern too is just proximity to residential. I mean, I, I know what the, what the, what, who's over there, West Floral? That's Seventeenth and Baker? I mean, I go to that one, it's loud, and it's not even that close to the residential. There's still a pretty big barrier...
There's a few homes across the way, but it's, it is loud.
It's loud, and so I mean...
Sounds like this one would have to be loud.
To me, this is closer to the residential, it's a higher, closer proximity. I would be really concerned about that noise, but that wasn't one of the, the issues on, you know, in the, I mean, it, it didn't seem like, from the perspective of the project and what we have as ordinances for that kind of project, that that was even, I mean, the variance was for the driveway. So that, that concerned me a lot.
A noise study was prepared on it, and they met all of our city standards, or the estimates and projections. That said, there's a difference between, and those measure more sound, and there's a difference between sound and noise. Noise bugs you. You know, noise is what, and we try to set up science and technology to measure that, but a lot of that, a lot of that is just the way it bothers you. The car wash on Seventeenth Street that both, several commissioners have mentioned, is, we are having a very difficult time with it. It was a previous use, they just tore it down, scraped it and replaced it.
Like don't steal.
So we didn't, we didn't really have much control over it at all. We had no, no control over it, but what happens is, we go out there, or the police goes out there and measures the sound levels, and they're within the parameters of our law. And so the, we are lucky because on that particular land use, the property owner and business owner are both very committed to trying to be a good neighbor, and they've gone through, and incrementally, they're going through a number of different tactics to, and I think they have a new one now. I'm not sure what they're talking about.
I don't want to interrupt, but if you want to discuss this particular project, you should probably agendize it for another meeting, and this is, time's really meant to be comments from the commissioners versus, yeah, a discussion about...
If we can, what we can do in the future with the car washes.
Phil?
Yeah, but you know, I always try to push things.
Actually, I wanted to just make a quick comment. I think I sent you an email, Vince, about the governor actually vetoed a bill about small cell towers, and unlike the ADUs, I'm hoping that we can have something come before us before all of a sudden we see a bunch of these things popping up and we're not able to control them. I just wanted to throw that out there. I think this is a, you know, opportune time to actually jump on this versus having it linger and linger, and all of a sudden people coming to us going, gosh, why are all these being approved? Why are you guys approving these things? And we're going, handicapped again, can't do anything. So if we can, I mean, get the ball rolling on that, that would be very helpful.
Cynthia?
I'm good.
You're quiet tonight. Just a couple things. I think the other, one other comment that, about today's meeting we had with our subcommittee, is there any way that the subcommittee members can get an agenda before the meeting, or some kind of outline as to what's going on? Because I, I know we sat down, Vince and Kendia and I sat down and talked about the agenda, but, you know, it was like, okay, Pam's going to show up with, you know, some people to talk about their request for a variance. You know, just was that, do we have an agenda? Did we have something that was beyond that? Was it just that meeting, or just that meeting we were going to have, or were there going to be other things that we were going to be...
Sure, we'll get you something out a few days before the meeting. So you're prepared. Any documents that come in as well, sure, absolutely.
Ali did a great job presenting, but it's just, to have it beforehand would have been nice, I think.
No, I mean, just to understand, I mean, to have the details of what was being discussed beforehand would have been helpful, because we had no idea what was, you know, what the concept was, and frankly, you know, there was some things that were agreed or disagreed in the beginning, and a lot more detail we could have had if we had had that beforehand, could have asked questions, and possibly made the meeting a different meeting than what it turned out to be. So that would be my suggestion at this point in time. And then, I'm not sure how we want to handle the question of the car washes, but I think that maybe there is something we can do to have a discussion on that in the near future, because there are a number of questions, and sound is one. You know, I think, you know, the unfortunate situation is, is that, you know, car washes have become more available to us because, you know, our, you know, residents aren't spending money on their, on washing their cars anymore, because it's one more thing that they have to worry about with the cutbacks in water and everything else, so they go to a car wash. So, you know, it's one of those things, it's like, I hope it doesn't turn into a Starbucks, but we got to look at what we're, what we're doing. There's no doubt about it. So if we can talk about that, maybe, and come up with something that would be helpful down the road, I'd appreciate that. And Vince and Kendia, thanks for your help on putting together the presentation. I needed a little help on that, and I appreciate your doing that, so. And I'll, I'll shoot a copy out to everybody. It kind of came together still at the last minute, we were still making some changes, but I'll shoot a copy out to everybody to let you see what we, you know, discussed and everything else. And with that, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.